Alright. As everyone starts settling, I want to welcome...
This is so fun!
Uh, I don't know why, I'm not even know, I don't know why I'm welcoming people, because you guys have been sitting in those seats probably for the last two hours. But, um, welcome back if you were in the other panel. Uh, and if you've been sitting here, sorry for your butts. Show Disoriented, something or other. So, welcome everybody, your moderator for the evening, Jenny Yang.
It's going, because it's gonna get hotter. It's, I guarantee you. So, hi everyone, I'm so glad you guys are hanging in here for the post-lunch coma. Um, we'll do our best to make this lively and informative, yeah?
Yes, definitely.
So, I am seriously so excited to do this. I can't contain myself, because these are all my favorite people, all in like one space. You know what I'm saying? Like, Jean Yang, I got to take a picture, Yang and Yang. And I wish I brought my American-born Chinese graphic novel that I had bought, you know, for my nephew, it was so awesome, like, so thank you Jeff and everyone, and Keith, for putting this together. So, this panel is about comedy in Asian-Americans, and that's what we're gonna talk about. So, um, I figure what I do is, I put together a panel of folks that I felt like could have a diversity of perspective and backgrounds and sort of comedic contexts. So, we have from YouTube comedians, to live stand-up comedians, to straight-up stand-up comedy, um, to, you know, performance artists, to sketch comedy, all of the above, right? So, I feel like that's gonna give us, ideally, a nice variety, right? So that we could really break it all down, because that's what I kinda wanna do. I wanna like, break it down. You know, so that at the end of this, not only are we entertained, but we're better informed about what it means to laugh at ethnic humor, or stereotypes, and, um, so just to give you a little context of where I'm coming from, I started stand-up comedy about four years ago. I took a class for all women, uh, and it was like, ten blonde, twenty-one-year-old actresses, and me, and one other Asian-American woman. Atska Okatsuka, who actually is a co-producer for Disoriented Comedy. And what I realized was, whenever I showed up in open mics, or, you know, traditional comedy spaces, like at comedy clubs, I was the only Asian, much less only Asian female. And even if I was there to do stand-up, I'd be picked on! You know what I mean? Like, I'd be sitting there, and, you know, Joe Schmo, blonde guy, would be looking at me, straight at me, and be like, "I dated an Asian girl once," and just launch into the most, like, offensive thing, just locking eyes with me, like, that's so, like, just like, "Oh, I pulled out." There's a sexual context to this. I pulled out, and, and there was a fortune cookie slip of paper. You know what I'm saying? Yeah, I see, okay, so he's laughing already. So, but you know what I mean? So, I was like, "You were looking at me in the eye, and you're talking about basically doing a sexual act with another Asian woman, and like, trying to make it funny by talking about fortune cookies?" You know what I'm saying? So, so that's that. So, that's my context. And so, what I discovered is, I wanted to, I wanted to find allies and a community. So, I, me and some other folks, we created Disoriented Comedy, which is the first-ever all-female Asian-American stand-up comedy tour, sold out so far since 2012. Yeah! And, and we get to, I don't know, how many of you have been to a mainstream comedy club to see a live comedy show? Raise your hand, just to give us a sense. Okay, so, a lot of you. I have to say, this is more than, than most Asian-American groups. You guys are here at this conference, so you're not really representative, maybe? I'm just saying. You're spending a Saturday talking about stereotypes, y'all. You're not normal. Um, so, but you know what I mean? Like, I felt like through Disoriented Comedy, just through anecdotal evidence, uh, we were attracting Asian-Americans who don't typically find themselves at a mainstream comedy club. Because sometimes they might feel that some things, some jokes are misogynist, or racist, whatever, right? So, that's what's really been awesome. And, to put forward a, a, a vision of what disoriented comedy looks like, or Asian-American comedy looks like, we like to show the diversity of that. So, we have someone who's Egyptian-American, Maria Shahada, performed for us. Because, guess what? The Orient, like we heard in the morning, used to be the Near East, or Iran, like Persia. And then, at some point, white people changed the boundaries, I don't know. It got confusing, what Oriental was. Um, and, and gender-wise, too. So, for us to be able to show, show the diversity of what it means to be Asian-American woman, whatever that means, really what it is to be other in comedy, is really what I feel like is behind Disoriented Comedy. And so, that just, I just wanna share my story, because that's where I'm coming from. And I feel very conflicted with this topic, because, on the one hand, I don't know how many of you like to follow comedy blogs, like, when like, um, was it Michael Richards? You know, the hair guy from, from Seinfeld?
Kramer.
Kramer! Do you remember how there was this, like, video circulating, where he just said the N-word over and over again at the Laugh Factory? Just, "N-n-n," I'm not gonna say it, you know what I mean? And then people were just, were like, "Holy crap, what, Michael Richards, what are you doing?" So, this is how it broke down, the conversation, some of you who might have read the discussion, the blogosphere around it. Some, a lot of comics were like, "No, man, I got into stand-up comedy because it's free speech, okay? Nothing is sacred. I get to make fun of whatever I want, AIDS, cancer, whatever." You know, nothing is sacred. It's the last bastion, a pure bastion of free speech. Then, you had some other folks who were just like, "No, that's really fucked up. Michael, Michael Richards is not allowed to just, in anger, start yelling at some audience member, because he's like, not doing well in his set, and just pop off with the N-word." Okay? So, I feel like that's a perfect example of how some of the conversation around, right? Like, race and stereotypes, how that interacts with stand-up or comedy. Because the comedy part of me wants to be like, "Oh yeah, I wanna talk about whatever I want." But the other side of me is also like, um, I've been on the side where I've been offended, you know? The other thing I wanna bring up is, another really awesome video. Did you guys see this video that got circulated around through Angry Asian Men, actually, and other circles? Where it's this grainy footage of, there's this middle-aged white guy who's a stand-up, and he put on these, like, slanty eyeglasses, and he did like a Ching-Chong act after a regular stand-up. He pointed out two of the only Asians in the front row, this couple. He started heckling them in his act, and did this whole full-on Ching-Chong, "Nya-nya-nya-nya" act, and "Peepee in my Coke," whatever, okay? He started heckling him so hard, in this video, you see the dude in the, in the audience? He actually just gets up out of nowhere, goes on top of the stage, and just clocks this guy. Wait, so, how many of you saw that? Okay, yeah, so, and that got weird reactions, too, like, even Angry Asian Men, you know, you know Phil? He, he, I don't feel like he's not like the most belligerent brother, but he's, you know, he expresses his opinion. He was like, "I have to say, I don't condone violence, but it felt kinda good." And I feel like, that's how I felt, you know? Like, I'm pretty pacifistic, you know? But, there was something purely kinda poetic about finally, we don't even know who this brother is. Does anyone know the name of this guy? I feel like we should search for him. He was like...
Give him a medal?
Give him a medal of, of honor for beyond the bad and ugly, or something. He went up and just cold-caught this guy, and this guy actually said, "I'm never gonna do that act again." So, hey, whatever. I'd like to think that the arc of justice bends toward our direction, but whatever. Anyway, so, I just wanna throw that out there as sort of some things that I kinda was thinking about, in terms of this topic of, when is it okay to laugh? You know what I'm saying? Because it's, it's, it's tough, and there's a lot of gray, and I want us to kind of hear each other's stories, because everyone comes from a very different background, performance-wise, and artistically, and, uh, identity-wise, and, um, hopefully we can learn from each other, right? And so, um, let's do that. So, what I'd like to do is have everyone individually introduce themselves, their name, um, maybe sort of what format you work in, in terms of comedy. And also, um, specifically, if you could just tell us a little bit about, um, how do you feel like you use stereotypes in your humor? Does that make sense? Okay, cool. So, let's, uh, let's start on that end.
Uh, my name is Andrew Fung, uh, of the Fung Brothers. We mostly operate on YouTube, but we do do live performances, and when we do that, we usually show a video and do stand-up. So, we do do stand-up comedy. As far as stereotypes, uh, I'll just say that we like to use stereotypes, um, under the assumption that all, that stereotypes are not a hundred percent true, that's why they're stereotypes. So, we use them in our comedy, um, mostly to make a point, and we think they're funny, but we generally, uh, try to, either, if we feel like that they're true enough, we'll own up to them and flip them, um, or, uh, yeah, just deny it.
And actually, if you can give examples, or an example, that would be great, too, in your introduction.
Uh, my name is David Fung from the Fung Brothers. So, for example, like, uh, Asians being bad at driving. Like, my parents are not good at driving.
That's true.
They're just not good. They're not good drivers, because they don't come from a country where that's really, they use subways and stuff in that city, like, they're not, like, they're not terrible drivers, they're not like killing people on the road, but they're not like, super tactful, they're not gonna be on the autobahn anytime soon. And, and, I mean, to me, that's just like, very logical, like, you have immigrant population, we're coming to a system that's very like, advanced infrastructure for traffics and roads, and they don't come from places that are necessarily like that with those places, and so, I'm just like, that's why, I mean, they don't speak English perfectly either, but like, I'm okay with that. I don't feel like, that's such a crushing thing, we have to feel inferior, because my parents are not as good at driving as somebody who's like, been here since the Mayflower, or whatever.
Nice, uh, next?
Yes, that's me. Hi, guys, I'm Kieran Deal. I'm an Indian. Hi. That's still Asia, I think, South Asia. Um, I do stand-up, I actually was on one of Jenny's Disoriented Comedy shows, which was really cool, it was really, that was like, the first time I'd ever been on a lineup of like, was like, so many women and minorities. So, that's cool, and it's interesting to see, like, I think it's interesting to see what comes up when you have a bunch of, like, women comedians, because we have themes, too, do you know what I mean? But you don't often see them back-to-back like that, so that was cool. What was the question? How I use stereotype? What is this?
Where are you?
Where am I? What is this? Is this done, am I done?
So, yeah, how do, how do stereotypes work into your act?
Yeah.
And if you could give an example?
I think, um, I think, I think one of the things that's really important to me is the idea of like, I would very much like to, like, transcend race, I think that's when you start to get very interesting as a performer, as an artist. Ang Lee is an example of someone who's been able to do this beautifully, like, she's just a fucking amazing artist, and that's, you know, beyond race. And I think ideally, that's where I would like to see stereotypes be. So, when I address it in my act, like, I'm American and Indian, so it's like, it's both of those things, like, there's the American part, and then the Indian part, is like, I think sometimes when you come up against what people expect you to be, and then how you actually are, so you coming up against a perception. So, I talk about like, I go out and audition for things, and, uh, and I play a lot of like, weepy bitches, I talk about that, it's like, there's a whole contingent of like, weepy bitch parts, where it's like, "Oh, my father is going to die in Pakistan, blah, 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 oh, boo-boo, oh, oh, oh." You know, and you, this is what I'm like, I'm like this, and then I'm supposed to go in and be like, "Uh-huh, uh-huh, uh-huh," you know? You know, and in my mind, I always say, it's like, "Oh, like, are we done? Can I like, go to a Chipotle? Like, is this over, guys? I want this to be over." And then, I say like, "Oh, you walk in, and you think, 'God damn, that's so offensive,' and then you walk out, and you think, 'God damn, I hope I book this.'" So, you know what, because that's kind of the conflict, and like, how you fit in, but the whole idea being like, how do you fit in to like, a narrative where your people are still up and coming, and all of that shit, and whatever, through personalization, and other big words, yeah? Alright, that's it for me.
Alright.
Alright, guys, I'm Joe Lu. I consider myself Asian-American, even though I wasn't born here. I, I was born in Vietnam, I came here as a refugee, as a baby. But since I served in the US Army for ten years as a captain, I'm Asian-American. Nobody applauds.
Asian-American, man!
Yo, we, we had a, we had a speaker, we had a speaker problem, there was, we blew out the speaker homes.
Okay. But I'm just saying that, uh, and I do my comedy everywhere. I, I, as a matter of fact, I do it for African-Americans, at the J-Spot, and I, and I could totally understand where you're coming from, I get stereotypes all the time. Latino crowds, black crowds, and I'm gonna give you one example. I was at a Latino crowd, and this Latino guy, he made fun of us. But he say, "Oh, make fun of your people that you cannot see, because maybe you cannot drive." And I went out, I said, "You know what? Hey, bro, you're right. My mom, she can't drive, maybe she cannot see, but she's not afraid to get pulled over by the police either, one, because she's legal, and two, she could afford insurance." That's why I do my comedy, because they don't expect an Asian guy counter-attack. Because I love doing stand-up comedy, God bless you.
Joe Lu, everyone. D-Lo.
Alright, how's everybody doing? All the ladies, y'all looking good tonight. I don't really talk like that. You know, some of y'all who don't know me are like, "Wait, is that a girl who looks like a man? Or a boy who looks better than my man?" I do shit like that. Um, I know I'm perceived as black in a lot of communities, a lot of times, I might be dark-skinned Latino, very rarely will people think that I'm South Asian. But, um, you know, there's also the gender thing, I get perceived as, uh, being a cisgender. I'm gonna queer you up real quickly, cisgender means biological, male, um, so I get that all the time, but, and, and I do identify as transgender. And, wow, great. Three, three, three queers in the crowd! But, um, you know, uh, the, if we're talking about stereotypes, I get stereotyped as a bunch of different things, very rarely do I get stereotyped as a South Asian, so I can't, I, I never address being South Asian, um, like, the South Asian stereotype. I definitely talk about my Sri Lankan background, and, uh, other funny and sad things. My career as a comedian started because I was heavily involved in hip-hop, and I was doing spoken word, and then I was kinda getting bored with all the serious, big-issue stuff, and I would preface all of my poems and rhymes with comedic stories that, you know, talked about how I came to write the piece. And then, one thing led, uh, led to another, and I got started getting invited as a host for different things, and then started being comedy, and was doing theater in New York, and I still do theater, and I, and I love the theater. But, um, comedy, I feel like, is the best vehicle to just like, crack people's heads open, and hearts open at some, in some time, in some ways. No matter what comes at me, because I also feel like, the aesthetic is based on the fact that, well, my aesthetic is based on the fact that, if I'm isolated in the streets, just by walking, or if, you know, walking down the street is hard, last thing I wanna do in my house of performance is isolate the audience. So, when it comes to, you know, stereotypes, offense, uh, being offensive, all of that, like, I, like, I'm one of those comedians who, no matter what, will not offend, like, make, make the, I, I won't make comedy at the expense of other people. That doesn't mean that I won't handle a heckler, but, at the end of the day, that's my sort of thing. Thank you.
Greg Watanabe.
Uh, hi, I'm Greg Watanabe, I am, I'm an actor, I am also one of the members of the Eighteen Mighty Mountain Warriors, which is an Asian-Pacific Islander-American sketch comedy group. Uh, we've been around for a long time, I guess, in, in the comedy, in comedy land. I, um, the question was about stereotypes, yeah?
How do you use it in your comedy?
Right. How are you using my comedy? Well, eh, I'll choose to say this. When I first started out, I grew up in Fullerton, California, and a part of Orange County, and, uh, in a really, at the time, it was a really, really, it's okay, I don't blame you. It's okay. At the time, I mean, it was a really, really heavily monoculture, uh, uh, white neighborhood, and so, um, my identity was really, really influenced by that. So, um, when I, uh, when I came into acting, I was an English major, for Christ's sake, I should tell you one thing, um, and, but, when I moved up to the Bay Area and started going to school, and I got into theater, uh, and then I fell into doing, uh, sketch comedy at the Asian-American Theater Company in San Francisco, um, I got together with people, and they said, "Alright, let's form this group." And I initially thought, "Funny is funny." You know, our, our goal is to make people laugh, and it's not about pushing forward an agenda, it's not, that, that was how I felt, because I felt, I'm an American, you know, I identify that way, and so, I don't think that we need to do ethnic humor, as it were. But, that was really, uh, my doing Asian-American theater, doing plays about Asian-American identity, about, um, hearing people's stories about their struggles, and telling their parents' stories, that really affected me a lot. And, um, it really changed the way I looked at, um, comedy. And how much of an influence on my life it had, in a negative way, in terms of how people use comedy against me, um, or even if it was against Asian-Americans, where we were the butt of the joke, and how that made me feel, because there were so few examples of Asian-American representation, that I felt like, once I really internalized that, that my work, that what I wanted to do with the Eighteen Mighty Mountain Warriors, was going to be about educating people about those stories through the comedy, using stereotypes, if we're going to do them, to flip them over, and to expose them for how fucked up they are. And, and to as much as we can, let people know that people harbor a lot of these stereotypes, and don't even realize it. People who we might consider allies within other communities, will harbor negative stereotypes that have filtered down from the days of yellow peril propaganda in California. So, when I think of comedy and stereotypes, I think of satire, to think how it is that we can put forth, I can put forward a message that would say, "These are some things that are wrong, and we need to look at them, and humor's a way of breaking that open." So, that's what I would have to say about that.
Making me cry. Yeah, man, like, this is so real, you guys! Like, seriously, like, what I love is that we get to, we get to bring joy in this context of the art, and the identity, and the whatever stories we tell. But, seriously, what got me in the, in this, in this game, and quit my day job from before, is because I just felt like, we just need more people talking stuff. Right? Just people just gotta be saying things, which is why I love all you guys on the panel, so, um, ah, great, so this is great. I love the intros, um, it's, I feel like it'd be real easy to just like, "Hey, let's just abstractly answer, when is it okay to laugh?", but I thought, maybe let's just get going with an example. Okay? I don't have the video here, but we're just gonna describe it. How many of you have seen Anthony Jeselnik's new show on Comedy Central? Raise your hand. Okay, one, two people. Damn! Three. Okay. So, basically, I don't know if you're familiar with Anthony Jeselnik, he kinda does like dark, dry humor, very sort of writerly jokes, you know, one-liners, um, he does a lot of the Comedy Central roasts, if you've seen those. Anyway, he has his new show, and the whole thing is called, um, something, The Jeselnik Offensive, which is a play on the fact that he is like, an equal-opportunity offender. I think that's sort of how he positions himself. And recently, I saw this, um, clip, which is so funny, because it was actually someone I knew, who was the kind of token Asian guy, who was in this clip on TV. He did this little mini mock game show, where they put up photos, and they said, "What kind of Asian are they?" So, they played this little sketch game, you know, like, "What kind of Asian are they?" And they first put up like, I forgot, man, it was just like, it looked like, like, some Asian guy, and then he said something offensive. But the, the punchline of it was, like, they, they had put up, um, uh, uh, in the end, it was like Andy, Mickey Rooney, in, in yellow face, with like, taped-back eyes, back in the old days, and he goes, "What kind of Asian is he?" And actually, my friend Jonathan, who happens to be on the show, as the guy answering the question, was like, "Um, I'm pretty sure he's playing Japanese character in this movie." And Anthony Jeselnik's like, "No, he's playing Oriental, ha, ha, ha." And then, it was like, all these other weird, maybe I'm not describing...
Dog jokes, they're dog jokes.
They're dog jokes, what else were there?
Yeah, the two were, oh, here's again, "They eat dog," and, uh, and then this one's hard, because they were Leoshin, or Lea- Leaoshin, oh, I mispronounced it, and...
But what is that? Who cares?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
So, those are a few of the, so, I'm just using that as an example. What, is it okay for us to laugh at that? Is it okay for us to laugh at Anthony Jeselnik putting up these photos, playing this game of like, "What kind of, what kind of Asian are they?"
Okay, uh, first of all, I think, because the Asian-American community is very weak, and, uh, if that was African-American, it would never have been, no way. I'm telling you, you, you could never do that, "Oh, what kind of, uh, uh, black is this?" They say, you get it? So, Asian-Americans, we, I think that we, as people, especially, we're very educated. We should speak up more, and, uh, and I think, to talk about the dog-eating, it, it happened to me. This guy at the J-Spot, it's an African-American crowd, he, he went, he made fun of me, he's like, uh, that Asian eating dogs, and all that. And I, and I was next, he didn't expect an Asian, uh, I went up, I said, "You know what? That's funny, I'm Asian-American, I never tried dogs before. But if I do start, I start with your mom, because she's a biatch." That's why I love comedy.
I like that, I like that.
Okay, 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 hold on!
I felt like that boom was like, right to me.
I love the variety of reactions just to that, right now? Which, which, you know, so, I got, I got a look of, of shock, from Karen, I don't know if that, I should interpret that as shock? I got the Fung Brothers going, "Ah!"
Affirmation, yeah.
Affirmation, like, yeah, word, word? Quiet over here.
I'm still thinking on the whole Asian-American is weak, the, that comment.
I mean, you know, if, if it's, if, if you, if, if it's the stereotype of Asian-Americans being, like, look, my mother, I'm gonna talk personally, she is very non-confrontational, okay? She is the type of person, somebody, like, a cop pulled her over for using her cellphone. My mother didn't even have her cellphone on her, like, she didn't, she barely knows how to use it, you know what I'm saying? But she didn't fight with the cop. And later, she got angered by it, and like, I think that that was a moment of her political activism, where I was like, "See, I'm a, like, this is what they do." But, you know, my family is not like that, you know what I'm saying? And I do find, in the Asian-American community, like, amongst my Asian friends, like, you know, uh, even, like, I will talk personally around like, queer stuff, like, I feel like, when it comes to like, politics and aligning with people of color, I found it less throughout my history, where there were like, like, if you found Asian folks that were like, "Yes, I'm a person of color," like, those were like, the die-hard motherfuckers, but there were like, fewer of them growing up than there were people who were like, you know, like, I feel like, South Asians and Asian-Americans, and I'm not trying to generalize here, but like, you know, this, this, the, the, the desire to be just, to be lauded, as, as other American white folks are, you know what I'm saying? I'm not, I'm not saying that I agree that the weakness is like, I, I, I'm not agreeing with it being a weak thing, I'm, I don't know what it is, I don't, I like, I've had conversations with many of my Asian-American friends who span the gamut, and, is it cultural? Is it, is it like immigrant? Is it like, trying to just survive the next fucking moment to get to the next place? Is it, what is it? But like, I don't know if weak is what I would label it as. I feel like it's a survival skill, and I feel like, that's, I think that we need to just, if, I don't know, like, I, like, it just hit me like a dagger, when it's just like, "Asian-Americans are weak," and then I'm like, "Oh, no!"
I, I apologize for that.
It's cool.
I didn't mean like that, though. I mean, we could, uh, improve, because we're educated, that's why.
No, but seriously, I, I appreciate, we, you know, prior to this, I, I told everyone, you know, "We're gonna listen to each other," and, you know, this is all in respect, because we wanna talk about, we wanna get into it, you know what I mean? So, it's cool, I appreciate this.
I think, um...
And then here?
I think what Joe is saying, um, and, weak, yeah, that's one way you could put it, but I think, uh, a more reasonable way to put it is like, they're Asians and Ameri, and Asian-Americans, I, I don't mean to talk about necessarily like, our parents who are first-gen, I'm like, we wanna talk about Asian-Americans who are influenced by America, who feel American. Uh, we get picked on a lot, and it's partially because we really, we, we make it easy for people to pick on us. Uh, we were, uh, we were doing a, a TV show with this tall, white, Jewish comedian guy, and he was like, during it, he was telling us a story about how he had another Asian on the show before us, and the other people just kept, just making fun of him the whole time, and they were like, and he just kinda said to us like, real honest, and he, I don't think he's racist or any, he was just like, "Man, man, you guys make it real easy for people." And then we were just like, "We do, because we don't stand up for ourselves." And this is specifically Asian-Americans, I know immigrants, they have a different mindset, they wanna keep their head down, they wanna support the family, that's, that's different. But I think, with generations to come, we need to speak up, we need to say things like, I think with generations to come, we need to speak up, we need to say things like, I think it's really funny how Joe came at that black guy who'd said that, I think that's hilarious, and on stage, you can totally do that. You know, maybe on the street, you don't want to, but like, but he got the power and the mic, the microphone's in his hand, he can say, the guy just said something about Asians, you gotta stand up for yourselves, and let them know, like, "Hey, we're listening, guys, like, you can say and sit back and say, 'Oh, no, we're Asian American, no, we're just American, we're just like everybody else'". No, you're not, people don't see you like that, no one ever sees you like that. Like, I don't know what, a few communities in the nation, like, really are like, "Oh, no, 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 everybody's just equal", no, like, really, you're Asian, and especially if you're a guy, you're definitely Asian. So, and so, I think it's on us for the educated Asian Americans, the ones who understand American culture, to step up, because in America, people don't respect people who don't thump their chest out, you know, and say, "Hey, like, look, I'm Chinese-American, I love Chinese food, I don't like hot dogs, that shit is nasty", like, stand up and say it, people, white people love that. Like, we have surprisingly a decent amount of old white fans, because we are so proud of being Asian. They're like, "Wow, look at these Asian American kids, being Asian American, that's so cool!". Like, I wish my neighbor, Nam, would do the same thing, but like, he's not, so, and it's, we understand that like, you know, not everybody is built to fight that same battle, but I'm just, and I think what Joe is saying is like, in generations to come, as we're more educated, more affluent in America, and we can speak English, we are smart as hell, like, we need to figure it out and step up for ourselves.
So there's a lot to that, I just wanna highlight the point, one of the sub-points that you made, which is that context matters. I feel like that's like a theme that happens when we talk about, you know, "When is it okay to laugh?", you know, on the stage versus on the streets, but I think Greg here had something to say?
Uh, yeah, um...
So much, so much!
Yeah, um, as far as like, the Asian American community is weak, I mean, I think people have addressed it to a certain degree, that, you know, that's a really one-sided way of looking at it, and I feel like, as we sit in the Democracy Forum across the street from the Japanese-American National Museum, many who, civil rights heroes who are Asian American, I mean, I think it's difficult to say that there isn't an activist community who stands up and speaks out. With, as to the question of respect, which is, what it is that the larger mainstream community affords the Asian American community, I will agree, that there's example after example of disrespect that is shown to our community, and that, so, then it becomes a question of, well, whose responsibility is that? And I can understand that you're, people saying, "Well, it really is important to empower ourselves to recognize injustice or imbalances, and then to speak out against that, and to encourage others within our community to do the same." At the same time, I think it's also important to say that because someone is disrespecting you, does not mean that you're weak, and does not mean that the entire onus is on you to make sure that respect is shown to you. To the other aspects of some of the jokes and the counterattacks to attacks on being Asian American and being made fun of for being Asian Pacific Islander American, or for, I would say that there are many levels of privilege, and so much of the attack humor that we talk about has to do with coming from a place of privilege and then denigrating the people who are below status and privilege. And that happens not only when we talk about mainstream America and the way they look down at us as Asian Pacific Islander and South Asian Americans, but within our own community, what, how we talk about ourselves, and how, and there's many cross-sectional circles, it's not just all separated. So when we talk about gender, we have to look at that within our own community, there's, everything is, you're not always, there are many levels of privilege, and some of those have to do with gender and sexuality, and, and the way that we interact with other communities of color, and we have to, I think it's important to say, it's not important always to just strike back, that doesn't create equality. As much as it might feel like we're standing up for ourselves, I think it's important to understand that that can also be, that, I feel like, is a criticism of our community, if we feel like there's a voice from our community that is denigrating, say, immigrant community who might be Latino, or the African-American community, because we associate class in a way that people outside of their community might do so. That it's important that those, that we consider them allies to the idea of social justice, and those same things that we would demand that people think of us, we need to demonstrate across the board. And that is the way we gain allies, and that is the way we give proof to the concept that we need and deserve respect, that we give respect to others, so...
I guess, everybody's said everything, you guys. I guess the only thing I would add to that is that, there was a, like, there was a, an ad that came out last year for Pop Chips? I don't know if you guys saw, it was like an Ashton Kutcher ad, and it made me think of that, where like Ashton, Ashton Kutcher dressed up in like brown face, and then he like pretended to be like a Bollywood producer, and then he did like, like this like really offensive Indian accent, and I remember a friend of mine, this comedian named Hassan Minaj, came out with a video, like, just really blasting the shit out of this guy for doing that, and kind of the thought behind it was like, and I remember when it happened, it's like, I kind of take like your point of view, that I'm just like, "Oh, fucking, you're an asshole, like, whatever, fuck you", like, and don't address it further, but he kinda took this stance here, or like, you know, kind of shot back with it, and actually got a ton of press. Like, it really, it went viral on HuffPo, like, it went everywhere, and they actually ended up taking the ad down. So I thought that was an interesting, like, lesson in how you handle when you see something, do you know what I mean? Like, what your reaction is, what your private and your personal reaction is versus what your public reaction is, and how you kind of demonstrate your advocacy, 'cause that was kind of an example where I learned, "Oh, look, that kind of affected some positive change, and really said something, and got quite a bit of traction and attention for like, 'Hey, this thing is fucked up'", you know? Excuse my language, and...
Oh, we're way past that.
Yeah.
Lord!
Also, uh, yeah, and I guess the last thing I would say is, oh, who are the, who's creating the content? That's my other big question, like, whenever I hear, like, when I hear Jeselnik is doing that, I was like, "Who made that? Who, who made that? Who was the writer? Who was producing? Who was directing?". I would like to, you know, 'cause that to me always makes, who's the content creator behind that material? 'Cause I think that makes a big difference in how Asian Americans would be portrayed, and if you were addressing stereotypes, the lens that you get to go in to on those things.
So, I mean, I feel like, just for more context, Anthony Jeselnik is super white. He's like pale-blue-eyed, he could be a poster child for the Aryan Nation, you know? But the other issue that comes up, though, is this issue of privilege as Asian Americans. I have had people talk to me, and, or I've even seen this of other Asian folks, where, you know, black folks would be like, "Why do you talk black?", or "Why do you, you know what I mean, like, why do you feel like you can talk about things?". 'Cause they'll perceive me as being really privileged, like I'm white or something, right? And they're like, "So, on the one hand, I'm Asian, so I can talk about being Asian, but can I talk about being a person of color, and some other people of color might not feel that I have that right?". You know what I'm saying? So that gets complicated for me, as someone who's creating my jokes and my content, and so, I mean, I think this whole "When is it okay to laugh?" is like something I think about all the time, when I'm like presenting myself and writing my jokes. So I'll throw out one last thing, just as like Jenny Yang moderator, but speaking as Jenny. When I first started doing stand-up, I got some coaching from a really funny, awesome, like, white female comedian, we actually sat down, and she's like, "Here, bring some of your sort of ideas, and we'll kind of talk through how you might structure that into a joke". And so, it started off, I said, there was a friend of mine who said, I went to her house for the first time, and I came in through the door, and I went to give her a hug, and she stopped me, and she's like, "Oh, in this household, we take our shoes off, you know, like your people". So this is what I told my comedy coach, right? And she's this white woman, who wrote for like The Wayne Brady Show and all this stuff, but she was just like, "Oh, that's kind of funny, maybe you should say like, kind of flip it, and be like, 'Oh, that's funny, 'cause, like, if you make them like Mexican or something, like, oh, that's funny, 'cause I have, oh, sorry, I have dirt, I was gardening, and I have dirt on my shoes, you know, like your people.'" So this is how she wrote my joke, right? So she made it, she's like, "Oh, you can make that funny, 'cause you could flip it, and if they're Mexican, you could do a gardener joke". So, okay, so, I performed this joke, this is like, in my anxiety of like, "Holy shit, I need to write material and be funny, I'm gonna try to be a stand-up comedian", it didn't even occur to me that that might be kind of fucked up. I performed it at Tuesday Night Cafe, and a friend of mine, all these awesome supporters, they laughed, it was like one of the first times I did stand-up, you know? And then afterwards, Lord Jesus, everyone, bless them, they said, "Jenny, that was really funny, but I have to say, I was kind of like offended by that joke, where you said the Mexican thing". And it like gave me like a weird like twinge in my heart, like, "Oh shit, these are people I care about, and they're like calling me out", you know? I was like, "Fuck!". And I like to think of myself as super righteous, y'all, you know? And so, but I know in my head, I was way on this anxiety tip of like, "I just need to be funny". And I, and so I have to tell you, to understand that debate around, as a comic, you just fucking, you just need to be funny, it's so powerful, you know, that motivation to just entertain, versus, "Oh yeah, I know I'm conscious about something, about the world, about how our words affect each other". So, I actually sat down, and I believe I've written a better joke because of it, because I now target white people. So I changed it, so, because the original, the original context for what happened, she was white. But in the moment of the coaching of writing the joke, she said, "Oh, you could do like a Mexican thing, where it's like that", does that make sense? So anyway, so the new joke is, the new joke is now, "Oh, in this household, we take our shoes off, you know, like your people". I'm like, "Oh, I'm sorry, I came in totally disrespecting the rules, and I didn't even think to ask, you know, like your people!". Yeah. So, anyway, Asians love it. So, anyway, so I just wanna throw that out there, like, it's a process, you know, and I really, I don't know, I just wanna kind of, any other thoughts, maybe, of Dilo?
I'll just say something real quickly, just, you know, with the, with the work that I do, it's mostly like, well, it's not mostly anything, but I do a lot of theater. And I had this one joke where I'm talking about my growing up and how I became who I am, and this is, in regards to race, like, there's stuff that I could talk about gender-wise and stereotypes around gender, but that's another conversation, but in regards to race, you know, I'm talking about getting to college and not really going to class, and I'm smoking weed, but all of my friends were Chicanos, right? So, I'm talking about kicking back on the lawn and smoking weed with Chicanos, and like, we're just joking around and whatnot. And then, at some point, I was like, I was kind of, you know, not called out, because we were trying to write the joke together, but I had to, I was like, "Well, I can't even do this", because again, there's this privilege thing, even though I'm perceived as Latino in certain areas, and even though I am coming from like an immigrant family, so to speak, the reality is that folks who are Latino and Chicanos in Los Angeles or in the States, like, the hierarchy is huge between what I have and what a lot of the Chicanos have, right? So, I had to make that joke be so leveled out, like, even if we were smoking weed at the end of it, like, my cholo friend is saying, "Yeah, UCLA, what, you know, you, we used to pay us to cut your grass, now you pay us to smoke grass on your grass, dumbass", you know, like, but I had to like make it, make it like, you know, in a way that just hit the politics of it, you know? And how, even in our communities, like, we're not the underdog, we're also going to be, and I'm saying like as honorary Chicanos in this one way, but that, but that you're subverting what the system is there, and like you're using, you know, things like affirmative action to really like, you know, sort of take a stand and make things better, you know? Anyway, I just wanted to say that, but like, but how I feel, like, I feel like most at home with artists who sit there, and like, you know, it's not just about workshopping the structure and the craft of your joke, but the craft inclusive of how do you address race and class and stereotypes of, around, you know, sexism and all of that, good stuff.
We, I'm sure there's more to say, but we have five minutes, and it's time for Q&amp;A. Whaaat? That's it? Come on, we can talk more about that! So, are there any questions from our esteemed audience here? You guys have been sitting all day, listening, talking. Oh, okay, back over there, Jess, do we need a microphone on her? I'll repeat the question, go ahead.
All right, um, my question is, if we're talking about, you know, privilege and all that, how do you guys react to when you're getting called out?
So, the question over here is, since we're talking about privilege and all that, how do you react to being called out?
Called out or heckled?
Called out.
Called out or heckled? Called out. So like, are you referring to like my example, where my friends were like, "Hey, man?".
Yes.
Do you know my reaction?
No, just, you should talk.
I mean...
You get a hot under the collar, and you start to...
Wait, start over?
Stretch, scratch like this, and you're like, "Ah!", and then you begin to think about, you know, you begin to consider, turn it over in your head, what they said, like, and then you kind of go through the modes, right? You get defensive, and you're like, "Oh, no, they don't know anything, what are they talking about?". Then you kind of consider it, and then you kind of go, "Oh, maybe I could see how they could feel that way", and then maybe you can come full circle, and you get around to be okay with what you said, or you'd be like, "Oh, I guess I didn't really consider that, like, that aspect of it", 'cause I think, yeah, just like, just like anybody getting called out or anything, you know, like you call your dad out, you know, he's probably like stunned for a second, and you just consider it, but yeah, I think, I think it's not like, there's, I don't, at least for me, it's not any different than anybody else getting called out about something that they didn't think about.
Yeah, I think that that's a, that's a great answer, I mean, I have the same response. It's interesting, because it can be difficult sometimes, the difference between stand-ups, whose stuff is being filmed perhaps, and then one joke might be taken out of context, versus a theatrical show, like Dilo might be doing, in which there's character studies, and then jokes are made within the context of that and within the larger play. But given all that, I would say that that's exactly what you have to do, you have to see whether or not there's any merit to what that person is saying, to, you know, because I think that there's always things that we're unaware of, that we internalize, that privileges that we exert, and that can be constantly be made aware of. If you look up Thailand, there's a sketch by the Eighteen Million Mountain Warriors that we did called Thailand, that was about essentially the sex tour trade, and we're trying to sort of talk about that. And we got a lot of criticism from Thais about the way we treated that, and we had a lot of internal discussion about whether or not we were on the right side of that or not. And, you know, we really considered it, and I feel like at the end of the day, we made a decision about it, but it wasn't without trying to build consensus, without having discussion about it. And, and sometimes it's, and you never go, "Yes, I was absolutely right about that", you know, sometimes there's, "I was mostly right, and I was a little wrong", or "I was mostly wrong", and we've changed jokes that we used, we've done before because of things like that.
We have a question here, no? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry? Oh, Taz or Deborah?
I think it's her.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, whatever you want to contribute, or...
I'll contribute something about the racial...
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask, like, his name, like, he talked before about, like, I do a lot of comedy, and I'm Asian American, but I'm adopted?
Yeah.
Oh, my!
This is Deborah Craig, hi Deborah!
Hi!
Grumpy Panda Films?
What, Happy Panda reaction?
Happy Panda, whoops.
Even though I'm Korean, I know, 'cause I'm adopted, I can take whatever I want. Panda for my own. But, so, doing, I do a lot of race humor, and being a female, and not having an actual Asian American cultural experience, I feel like I get a goodness test of what people find sense of or not, because when I'm like here or see that stereotype or joke, it's like funny, isn't actually my personal experience, 'cause I find it very interesting to measure that against other people's experience, for something I'm not talking about, and to bring that back. But I did that video, Yoga for Black People, which was extremely controversial, 'cause it's called Yoga for Black People, and I'm these Asian American females.
She did, she did a video where it was like, "I'm gonna show you yoga moves for black people", right, and you were in it, yeah.
And it wasn't risky moves, because it was like, you know, representing, if you're putting yourself out there as an Asian American, there's not a lot of people out there doing that, so you have to recognize that you're also sending messages, like, "Oh..." You have to recognize that you're also sending messages clearly like, oh, they have a limited experience of what they see as Americans, like, you know, you're adding to that machine.
What's this Asian lady doing, talking about doing yoga for black people?
I guess a question that, um, and that's good, because, I mean, because we've all been in that, where we've made a joke. I mean, we made a video, and we took it down, because we got a certain response right away.
Oh.
Yeah, and you'll never see it. So, yeah, uh, I don't know.
You're not gonna talk about it?
Uh, but really...
Yo, I told them my Mexican joke. I love Mexican people.
No, I honestly, there's like probably two videos. But anyways, I'm just saying, like, I think a question that as comics and people are gonna go on, uh, go and get at those issues, we have to ask ourselves, "What do we gain from this?"
Yeah.
What do we gain from making fun of black people? What do we gain from making fun of homeless people? What do we gain from making fun of Mexican people? Now, if you... Now, I think what people need to feel from you, when you say that joke, is that they need to feel that you don't hate them, because...
Can I ask that?
Okay, I'm just gonna finish real quick. Uh, Michael Richards Kramer...
Yeah.
It didn't seem like he liked black people, when he was saying the "r." You know, the N-word with the "r" part, like, that was...
Yeah, yeah.
No. Yeah, nobody was... Yeah, he said like...
He said the word "lynch."
He brought out everything, trust me. Not a single, like, minority would tell you like, "Oh, yeah, I think, uh..." No, I think he definitely still loves black people, like... Or like, he's maybe on the fence about it, but like... And but Louis CK, one of the most famous and respected comics, he's best friends with Chris Rock, he uses the N-word, but not to call people the N-word, but he uses it in his act, and he's white. But he's okay, but he does it.
He doesn't in a context of a story?
Yes, and so, and you can tell when Louis CK says it, that he doesn't hate black people. You just know. You're just like, "Oh, no, he makes fun of everybody one."
He has to write "Pootie Tang," so that's questionable, whether or not he loves...
He wrote "Pootie Tang." Like, uh, so... Yeah, right, there's a high context, but also, it's just like, you just need to feel that you just... The person doesn't hate you that's saying it, you know?
So, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure we get another question or two. So, Taz, did someone else over here have their...
I love black people. I just... I'm like playing that, because that's like, it'd be horrifying, like...
Yeah, no, no, no. We, I think, we know you love...
I love black people.
Yes. Some of your best friends are black. No, totally. This is a safe space, dude. No, for real.
You also love black people.
I'm glad that you're sharing your experience. Sure.
I said something that's totally opposite, not correct.
No, no.
The whole point was that I didn't see any black people in yoga.
Oh.
And then anywhere practicing, it was like a big religious, uh, stoppage of like, why a lot of black people didn't go to yoga.
Yeah.
The point of it was to actually engage, a social discussion about it.
Right.
It was just a fairly controversial, you know, using my own identity as a...
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Don't hate black people, that's good.
Oh, did you want to say something? Oh, Karen or Joe?
No, I just want to add something to the Fong Brothers. Uh, I do my comedy not just to counter, because you guys think that I'm just doing it just to counter. No, I'm actually doing comedy to help people be aware of the stupid little stereotypes. And when you go to my shows, I'm actually... I told them that I was a captain. See, I'm like a role model, a captain, an officer. I was in charge of 150 people. I don't do all the stupid stereotypical making fun of Asian just to get the last one and then leave. I do both, but I also am, but I was a captain. I did airborne. So, like a role model for future Asian-Americans.
Taz. I'll repeat the question.
Taz, uh, my question was about comedy as a tool for social justice activism, and how you use it in... I like the Hassan Minaj video, saying the Fong Brothers videos. I know a lot of you guys are involved in that. I just wanted to see how you use comedy as a tool for social justice.
The question is, how do you use comedy as a tool for social justice?
I feel like Karen didn't talk, so...
Oh, I just like, you know, we made a video about voting. There was kind of addressing the issues of like why first-generation Asian-Americans don't vote. And in that video, I mean, it's humorous, but it wasn't really... It was just like, to us, the truth is funny. It was really just the truth. And a lot of Asian immigrants that are first-generation vote, because they don't see the value in it, like, just bottom line. They don't really understand the system. They don't see... You know, they don't come from places where that's valued, and then that was it, and then that was it. And there's just, we just pointed it out, and that was like kind of our humor in it. And I think that's at least our style. I know there's other ways to do it. And a lot of people, they like, they do it in a roundabout way, but we kind of like to hit it on the nose. And that is how we address like social issues typically. But there's a way, you can work around it too and be funny about it.
Uh, I made a film, like, I made a documentary about women soldiers in Nepal. Like, 40% of the rebel army in Nepal were women over the course of a 10-year revolution. It was hilarious, guys. Really funny stuff, let me tell you. HBO picked it up, and it got nominated for an Emmy, and that was like a very like social just... Thank you. But that was like a very like, I mean, you know, you went to a jungle, and you shot this woman in a rebel army kind of thing. So, I, I think, like, my background is very much in, in the idea of like art as a form of social justice or social change, or like gender and like, and, and race. But I... And regardless, I think it's regardless of the medium, the themes and the tropes that you're interested in will transcend the medium, which a lot of people don't think about it that way. So, whether it's a film, whether it's a play, whether it's, you know, music or whatever it is that you're doing, I think that the themes will stay the same. And in comedy, I think you think about the themes of what you want to discuss, but then it's also like, be really fucking funny. Do you know what I mean? If you, if, like, if you were the... Be the funniest fucking person in the room, because that speaks, just be as good as the boys, be as good as, be as good as everybody else there, if not better, because that's, that is like, to me, the best representation of what you can do, like, get great, because that's gonna speak volumes for what you're capable of, and that'll speak volumes for what the minority is capable of. And I think that's so condescending, but you know?
Yes, thank you. That's actually a great note to end on, because we need to wrap it up. And so sorry for the two questions in the back that we're not able to get. Okay, I am, as the moderator, I'd just like to throw in one thing. We, um, logistically, the final gathering is gonna be in the forum, so let's all go over there after this. I just have to say, as comedian, as a comic, as a writer, and as someone who wants to create, I want to thank you all for participating in this, because I respect you all, and I really appreciate you being so honest. I want to thank you all for paying attention and being such great audience people. One thing that I'd like to throw out there, the theme of today is so much about, "How do we tackle this issue of stereotypes?" And I feel like one of the actionable solutions is supporting content creators, right? I know a lot of you are content creators, but look us up. We all love to speak and perform at colleges, universities, and workplaces. Hire Disoriented Comedy. Go to disorientedcomedy.com. Everyone has amazing resumes up here. And so, you now know a bunch of people who have a background and a context that you understand, right? For why they do what they do. So, now you have these new people that you can help support when you hear about them, okay? So, see live comedy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, all of you guys. Let's go on over to the forum for the closing plenary. Uh, and we appreciate all of you guys for being here. Thank you, Jenny. You were awesome.